Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting will please come to order. At a good notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the Bolton Board of the Municipal Building, notice made available to the Township Clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star and Ledger. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Weissman?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Reggio? Mr. Blount? Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
And Chairman Cahill?
Here. Will everyone please stand for salute to the flag? Flag, United States of America. Which it stands, one nation comes down. Can you hear me? Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Yes, there are. The face field application on thirteen hundred West Seventh Street is adjourned until September. Laura, do you have an exact date for that?
Uh, September twenty-sixth, and no further notice.
Will they renotice, or are they gonna, we're gonna carry this notice?
We're just gonna carry it.
Okay, so anybody here in the face field application is gonna be carried to September twenty-sixth with no further notice by the applicant? Those are all the changes I'm aware of.
No, Mr. Canely, uh, fifty-two School Street has withdrawn.
Oh, fifty-two School Street, Orvin Patel, that they have withdrawn that, so that will not be.
Yes, withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay, let's move on to item number five, twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty-five V, Darlene Mumber. Is Darlene Mumber present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Two oh seven Elizabeth Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey, oh eight eight five four.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
I'm here because we had wanted to put a shed on the property. We've always had one here since we purchased the house, never, um, and we're just replacing it. Yeah, we really wanted to replace it because the other, the metal one just rotted and the other one, the wooden one, was just falling apart. Animals were attacking it, and so we thought if we put something up a little more sturdy, and I could put all of the things for my, you know, well, for gardening and mowing the lawn, et cetera, and have a neat place.
Understood. That's okay. That's a good, that's a good option. It's a good reason. Jonathan, do you have any questions or any issues with this?
No, I don't, Mr. Chairman. As we mentioned in the report, it's a very minor overage of the coverage from the principal building, and there's no need for any other variances.
Got you. Okay. Any other questions or concerns from anyone else on the board? Hearing none, I'm gonna over to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application? I believe there was a gentleman who, uh, was there earlier.
Yes. Could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Laura, I need your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Ken Bytes, B E I T Z, at two oh one Elizabeth Avenue, Piscataway, of course. I'm right, we're adjacent to the shed and the illegal structures of the.
Before you go ahead and testify, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand?
Okay, hold on. My hand's up.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I read the papers on this, and it sounds like the, the board has already made up their mind on everything. And, uh, I got, really.
Sir, the board has not voted on this matter yet. The board has not heard anything about this matter, so don't say the board has already made up its mind.
Oh, no, please, don't take offense. I'm trying to express myself. I, I said, nothing to do with the board. I said, just by reading the application papers, it sounded because some of the things that I read here, I'm not gonna get into all this. It's, it's basically trivia. However, ordinances are law in town. The reason, uh, the, the, the so-called, um, what do you call it, the survey that was submitted, there's no, there's no data on it or nothing, and I was just concerned, like, where did this hundred and sixty square feet come from when they want a ninety-eight, uh, ninety-six square foot shed? I was just confused, and, and I really didn't know. And I'm like, well, what is this? Like, where is it? I went down to the township and I went over there, and I got, I was still confused. I ended up with Mr. Hoff's office, and I showed him some pictures, because what I did first, excuse me, I'm out of order here, uh, you know, chronological order. I went to the tax office and got something with the actual footage on it, so we're, you know, we're correct with it. I have that here, but you're not allowed to see it. Mr. Hoff's office has it, and the planning board has it. I don't know if you folks can see it, regardless of that. The main structure is thirteen hundred and sixty-four square feet. That's the house. The garage, which is attached, is five hundred and eighty-eight square feet. It's twenty-eight feet by twenty-one feet. That's a very big garage. The members are the fourth owners of that house. I lived there for, well, I'm seventy-four, and, uh, my father built the house in fifty-three. Basically, my whole life. Uh, we knew all the owners. I don't recall them having that first shed there. So, uh, anyway, I'm backtracking a little. If you add the thirteen sixty-four and the five eighty-eight, you get nineteen fifty-two. Okay, you got nineteen fifty-two, and they want a ninety-eight square foot shed. I said, okay, let's figure this all this out. I says, this doesn't add up. So I went out and looked. I said, well, the canopy, which is not on their, on their, what they submitted, and it's not on the tax office. That's a taxable item, by the way. Uh, you check with Greg at the tax office. It's a hundred and twenty square feet on the back of the garage with a roof on it. It requires a building permit and inspection and building codes. I didn't know this. I just went back with a simple thing and said, where did, you know, where did the footage come from? My issue here with this meeting is the one point six increase, okay, which I'm getting to. So, they want ninety-eight foot, and I wrote it down on, on Mr. Um, Mr. Hoff's office. I forgot the name of the departments. I'm trying to find my, uh, map here. Ah, you know, when you want it, you can't find it.
Mr. Hoff's a construction official. He has nothing to do with the zoning board, sir.
No, I know that. It's nothing to do with the zoning. No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to tell you.
I'm trying, I'm trying to expedite. There were a lot of applications tonight.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do it right here.
Right here, sir.
Right now, what they want is two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight square feet over two illegal structures. You are never permits, okay? The metal shed they're talking about was ripped down. Matter of fact, a friend of mine, Michael Toll, took the scrap metal away, and I believe that was with Joe Frank. They never removed that. Mr. Mumber, when he built the shed in the back in the corner, which is still there, I told him, I said, Richie, you have a permit to that. After his exfil, he said he didn't need one. He later built a hundred and twenty, uh, excuse me, a twenty-one foot by six foot wide, hundred and twenty square foot canopy on the back. Anyway, the, uh, Hoff's office, uh, construction over there, they made it, they just took it down last night, uh, excuse, yesterday and today, they ripped it off the house. Okay, it's off the house. So, the real issue here, this all, this whole, uh, uh, thing you have here is void on the face because it doesn't exist. There is no, the, the exact coverage of this house now is nineteen hundred and fifty-two square foot, and they want to put a shed. Okay, nineteen fifty-two. They can, and they don't even need you folks. They could just go down to town, get a permit, and put a forty-eight square foot shed. No problem, beautiful. It's all within the law, and nobody will be jealous, and, and you don't have to go across the board and the whole town. Okay, it's forty-eight square foot. They want ninety-six. Okay, the, the one twenty in the back is gone. It's ripped off, okay? Now, that, that puts them not at a, a, a one point six increase, it puts them at twenty point four eight. Okay?
Sir, 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 I'm gonna cut you, I'm gonna cut you off, sir. I'm gonna cut you off, sir. Our township, our township expert has no problem with this application. Okay?
I'll tell you right up. Piscataway is the big C, and it's not for chiefs.
Okay, that's good. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Normally, we give you three minutes to come back and discuss this. I've given you anywhere from six to seven minutes.
No, no problem. I, I had you figured out right from day one.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any, uh, Laura, anyone else have their hand raised? Okay, we're gonna close the public portion, and I'd make a motion to approve this application.
I have a second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, sorry. I didn't hear you already. Mr. Mitterondo?
I abstain.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Ms. Mumber, your application's been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document in our next meeting. We'll send a copy of that document to you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Take care, ma'am. Thanks for your patience.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Item number six, twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty-eight V, Mikash Charisa?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Good evening. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address, please?
Because, eighteen Marshall Lane, Piscataway, New Jersey, zero eight five four.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
I want to have, surround my house, uh, just to protect from, from, uh, this, there's coming so much, so many deer coming all the time, eating my fruits as they was in the garden. And also now we have, uh, uh, grandkids coming here for their, for their security also, and then for the privacy that we can have.
And you understand that if the township ever needs access to that easement, you would be responsible for removing and replacing the fence?
Yes, that, that's what, that's what is written here, but at the time of, uh, yes, and I was told that, you know, we'll, township will remove, and I have to replace, I have to, I don't know.
You would be responsible for removing it and replacing it?
Yeah, okay, I understand now. Thank you. I think about it later, so I understand that.
Any other issues, Jonathan?
Uh, yeah, we just wanna see a full utility markout, and we're recommending it be placed a little bit inside of the center line of that easement, just because we don't wanna have the footings of the fence interfere with any, uh, utilities that might be there.
Is that okay, Mikash?
So, what, what I have to do now?
So, instead of having the fence, instead of having the fence run along the property line, um.
So, I got it. I have to, I have to, uh, in, five, five foot in, no?
Five foot in from the east, the east property.
Okay, that's, I mean, yeah, I will, I will do that, yeah.
And I make sure, I make sure there's no pipes underneath.
Okay.
Okay, you're in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any comments or questions about this application?
No, Chairman.
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Everybody, woo-hoo. Mr. Weissman?
Thank you.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application has been approved with an amendment that you're gonna move this fence slightly. We'll memorialize this in a written document at our next meeting and send a copy of that to you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good luck, sir.
I can leave now?
Is that a question?
I can leave the meeting now, or I have to.
Yes, you can leave. Have a good night.
Unless you wanna take my place, and I'll gladly leave.
Thank you.
Item number seven, twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty-six V, Abdul Sharik Mohammed?
Hello, sir. This is Abdul Sharik Mohammed. I live in, uh, five on five Crestwood Street, Piscataway.
Uh, good evening. I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand, please? Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board why you're here?
Yeah, so basically, I need to put, uh, six feet solid fence, um, because, uh, I need it for safety, security, and privacy for my family, after little kids, and most of the time they spend, uh, outdoors playing. And recently, I have the burglary at my home, uh, on seventh of, uh, July. Uh, all my valuable stuff was stolen, so I, that's the reason, that's the main reason why I need to put up the fence, so that it acts as a privacy and security for my family, because we feel very vulnerable right now. Uh, we really need to have a good security, so that even my kids can go outside, play anytime when they want. And the sidewalks in front of my house, they're not, they're very uneven, and they are concrete sidewalks. And if my kids, they try to play, uh, the right cycle on the sidewalks, they tend to fall off, because they are very uneven and very old. So, at some point, yeah, so that's the main reason we want to set up the fence, and I, uh, looking forward to a decision from your side.
Okay, Mr. Mohammed, no problem. Um, Jonathan, do you have, uh, issues with this?
Uh, the main, the main issue that we have is the site triangle at the intersection of Buttonwood and Crestwood. Uh, that's why my recommendation was to push the fence back, uh, along Buttonwood, just to make sure that there is a clear side triangle. So, right now, the property line is approximately ten feet from the edge of the road. Uh, I was suggesting that that fence be located thirty feet from the edge of the road, twenty feet from the property line.
Mohammed, you okay with that?
Uh, can I at least get like ten feet, if you don't mind, at least, and because if, if, if you give me like twenty feet, I would be left with very little fenced-in area, and that would be like, you know, uh, because mine is a corner lot, I would really not have much space for my kids to play around. And I, I, I mean, it would, it would be very squeezed, to be very honest. And down the road, I'm also planning to put up a shed in my property, and that would also eat up a lot of space. So I would really appreciate if you guys can, you know, if you just give me like ten feet, I would really appreciate that.
Unfortunately, because the fence is proposed in the site triangle, it affects the ability of motorists to see safely, and that's why Piscataway is recommending that it be twenty feet from the property line. It's a safety issue, Mr. Mohammed. I apologize, but you can do those other things with your backyard at different spots, other than where it's gonna be, uh, you know, twenty feet.
Right.
I, I can read the room pretty well, and if you are in agreement with the recommendations by my, um, my expert, I can get you this approval, I'm pretty sure, so. Depends on.
Yeah, so just to add one more thing, the Buttonwood Drive, it's a dead-end street. There's not much moving traffic over there. It's very quiet throughout the day. Uh, you can also check the layout, sir. Uh, so, if you can just please give me some, you know, um, you know, concession or, you know, so that we can definitely go ahead and, uh, put up the fence, because twenty feet seems to be, you know, very, uh, I mean, it would leave us with a very little fenced-in area, so please see if something can be done on this regards.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that, uh, while I've been representing this board, we have ever agreed, uh, to allow somebody to put a fence in the site triangle. Yeah, no, I'm not gonna be, it's not gonna be the first time either. You, you, you really must either take time, we can put this, uh, uh, application out for another month or so, give you time to talk it over with family, whatnot, but I, I, I think that the recommendation made by, uh, my engineering department is gonna be a, a deal breaker with getting you this approval. It's, you're on a, you're on a corner property, and I apologize, but you purchased the property, and for safety purposes for all of Piscataway residents, um, we, we can't approve that in that site triangle, so.
So how about like fifteen, fifteen feet setback? Is, is that doable?
I, I believe Jonathan said twenty feet. Is that right, John?
That's, that's correct. Would it be possible, would the board entertain, uh, having the fence be, um, having the fence be at an angle on that corner, so that way it stays outside of the site triangle, uh, provided that there's landscaping in front of it to make sure that it stays attractive? He can come into the office and we can.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more in favor of that. I, I want the applicant happy by that same standard. I want the township to remain safe on that corner lot. So, yeah, if, um, if you want this gentleman to come in and sit with you and, and go over, uh, options or alternatives to the, the fencing, I'm, I'm more than happy to entertain that. I'm sure the rest of the board is saying.
Okay, so, so let's say if I get offline and, uh, talk to, uh, Mr. Jonathan, uh, would, would that be?
Tonight?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, would that be approved on that day, uh, when I come and make the decision, uh, when I talk to him, or does, I mean?
Can we do that conditionally? Give a conditional approval based on the outcome with, uh, Jonathan and? Yeah, as long as, as long as we know what the setback is going to be, and what the angled part is going to be, and I can describe it in a resolution, then we can do it tonight. Okay. That, that makes sense to me. Uh, anyone else on the board have any questions or concerns about what we're trying to do here? No? Okay, um, show up as a public, uh, Jim? Well, I, I, I need, uh, Mr. Mizrahi to tell me what the setback of the fence is going to be, and how many feet are going to be angled.
That will be, uh, that will be measured tomorrow when I have, um, when I have the equipment to do so.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna have to carry this matter if we can't, uh, have that information this evening? Got you. Uh, because I can't prepare a resolution if we don't have that on the record. The specific on the, I can appreciate that. Laura, what's the next, um, meeting?
September twelfth.
Uh, Mr. Mohammed, September twelfth is when we would entertain this application again, once you and Mr. Mizrahi have, uh, figured out how you wanna come to a compromise.
You don't have to renotice. You don't have to renotice again.
Okay, so we're gonna put this off till September twelve.
All right, thank you so much.
No problem. Okay, anybody here in the, this application of Abdul Sharik Mohammed, it is being carried to September twelfth with no further notice by the applicant? The only notice you're receiving is my announcement here tonight. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mohammed.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item number eight, which is twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty-four V, Hardik Kumar, Angia, and Kanti Mehta. Are the applicants present?
Yes.
Angia and Mehta?
Yes.
Okay, I, I need to swear, I need to swear. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, we record to show that Mr. Blount has joined the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Rodney. Could the applicants raise their right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. One at a time, could we have your name and address, please?
Kanti Mehta, six one six Plainfield Avenue, Piscataway.
We can't hear you.
Kanti Mehta, six one six Plainfield Avenue, Piscataway. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. Hardik Kumar, Angia, thirteen Roosevelt Court, Syracuse, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could one of you explain to the board what you'd like to do here?
So, we're currently doing, um, additional alteration work to our home at six one six Plainfield Avenue. Um, and we, we already have a front setback of thirty-six feet to the front door. Uh, we studying permits and everything for the landing and the steps, which is going, uh, four point five feet within the setback, but we're, today we're seeking the variance for, um, constructing a roof over that, which is roughly about three and a half feet within the setback.
Jonathan, do you have, um, comments about this site impact?
The, the rest of the, the rest of the site's conforming, so this, this is the only, uh, variance. Uh, we do have a couple of comments and recommendations in the report, uh, that I'd like the applicant to agree to, to be conditions of approval, um, pertaining to the site triangle of the intersection with maintenance of landscaping, uh, as well as obtaining permits for new outdoor mechanical equipment, and screening the air conditioning and equipment units on the site.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
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 Okay, great. We can move forward now. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
Yes, Alex W.
Hi, how you doing?
Hi, Alex. Good evening. I need to, your name and address, please?
Uh, my name is Alex White, and I live at six fourteen Plainfield Ave.
Thank you. Could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. White.
Um, so, yeah, so, uh, we, we've actually met the, the new neighbors who are moving in. They're very lovely people. Uh, we're very excited to, you know, have some, uh, more younger people living next to us, too. Um, but the only concern we had is a big, beautiful house they're building. Um, and unfortunately, it's, it is very close now to my house, which is, um, you know, I, I can kinda get over that. Um, and my, my house has been grandfathered in. It's kinda close to the, closer to the property line than normal. My only concern and, and hope, and I hope I'm not being irrelevant, but I saw there was, um, something about air conditioning, um, units, or, or a, you know, the, I, I guess the outside condenser needed to be fenced in or whatever, but I just, I just wanted to see if it was relevant to know if that was going to be on my side, um, because if it is, it's basically going to be on my house. And I was just wondering if there was any way to make sure that it would either be on the other side, or maybe in the backyard or something, but, uh, I mean, it's not complete end of the world, but I just wanted to see if, and I'm sorry if I'm being irrelevant, I'm a first-time homeowner, so I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to figure this all out, but.
No, you're entitled to your concerns, absolutely. Jonathan, is, is that something that's relevant?
Um, can I just clarify with the, the question asker? You live adjacent on the side where the driveway is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there was a, there was an existing air conditioning unit shown on the drawings, uh, close to the intersection, so the other side of the house?
Yeah.
Uh, and seeing that equipment is what prompted that comment. So, we don't have a plan, to be clear. We don't have a plan showing proposed equipment, uh, but that's what caused that comment to be generated.
Okay, but at, at this point, we don't.
No. But, Mr. White, under the law, as long as that air conditioning unit is ten feet off the property line, it's allowed to be there. If it's any closer than ten feet, they would have to come back to the board for, for another variance application.
Okay.
It has to be ten feet between your, the property line that you guys join, and where that air conditioning unit starts.
Sure, okay. That, that makes total sense. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
No one else, Chairman?
Okay, close the public portion. I'd make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Cahill?
Yes. Your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Uh, item number nine, twenty-four dash ZB dash thirty-two V, Adrian Bertha? Is the applicant present?
Present.
I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Adrian Bertha, four forty New Market Road, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could you explain to the board what you would like to do here?
I'm, I'm looking to do a fire rebuild. Um, I'm doing, um, I believe I'm asking for two hundred and thirty-two square feet, um, out of my variance. Um, I don't know what else, uh, I would be required to answer, but that's what I'm looking to do right now currently. Um, just, just to remodel, fire remodel. Currently not living in a home.
Uh, Mr.
Chairman, he's also expen, he's expanding the house. He's not just doing a fire.
We're doing and expanding, okay. Uh, Jonathan, you had some issues with the site impact, more?
Uh, code, code enforcement, uh, informed us of a number of violations associated with the property. Um, some of that was reflected in the site plans were provided, such as a second kitchen, uh, the number of bedrooms, um, and, uh, yes, we acknowledge the building coverage as well in that, uh, staff report.
Um, Mr. Chairman, we do not usually permit, uh, second kitchens? No, I'm, well, well.
It's not, it's not, it wa, the, the, the plans that the, the architect did, it was supposed to be a butler's pantry, and the, the, he put, it's not a kitchen. I, and I, I believe that what's coming up is, is a, a question is, um, when I bought the house back in two thousand and six, I got a, a letter from code enforcement, said I had, I was, um, rent, I was, it was a bunch of Mexicans living in my property. Um, as you can see, I'm not Mexican. Um, back then, it was code enforcement official came out. Mr. Johnson came out and did a walkthrough to the house at the time. Um, I showed him who lived in the house at the time, which was my kids, who at the time went to Arbor. They were all young kids. Um, it's never been a rooming house, and I, I never had Mexicans living with me. I'm, I'm, I'm foundational African-American, so it was basically slander. And also, there was a, 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 over the years, I got to know Mr. Snyder personally, because it seems like every time there was something, I, 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 I'm a car collector, so I have, and I currently, I still have my cars. I have all the cars here, the collector cars. They're all registered and insured, collector plates. Um, they, I was accused of running a car, a used car lot. Um, Mr. Snyder came out, um, multiple times and, and, and checked the, the insurance policies and the plates and made sure the car was there. There was never any cars for sale on the property, never any cars on the street, but it just was, seemed like every, anything that happened, sir, was always something, um, if, if a neighbor parked their car by, so, on the street, it was, it was my car. You know, I used to get caught, Mr. Snyder, I had my, my personal office number, because he would call me, and the police would come out, run plates, and find out the car wasn't, cars didn't belong to me.
This has nothing to do with the second kitchen?
Yeah, it does, because.
What was, what was told to you in the past and, and other?
Well, it's in the letter. I apologize. It's, it's in the letter. This, it's in the letter that was given that, um, that would be. Well, it's in the letter. I, I apologize. It's, it's in the letter. This, it's in the letter that was given that, uh, um, there would be questions that would be brung up, so I thought I was addressing the letter, so, let's see. The pantry, the butler's pantry, sir.
I'm sorry. Um, my name is Leslie Bithia, and I'm his wife, four-forty New Market Road.
Okay, I need to swear you in, ma'am. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My husband is a chef by trade, and that is why he wants, he wanted to add a butler's pantry, so he has more space to put all the stuff in the kitchen. That is what it's for.
Yes, it's not an extra, it's not a secondary kitchen. I didn't, yeah.
Extra, like, room for us to have more space.
There's no, there's no running water in this room? There's no, uh, gas or being run or electric?
No, no.
It's just for more space?
Yes, it's a pantry. It's gotta be a pantry, because I, I, I make my own bread and, and baking and pastries and stuff, so...
Sure.
Um, I, I don't, I'm not looking to do anything illegal. I'm not, you know, I'm not looking to rent, rent the property out.
Could, could you describe what you plan to put in the butler's pantry?
Um, bread maker, um, coffee station, um, storage.
They separate from the kitchen to have, like, bigger equipment. We have, like, a bigger...
I do plan to have, um, a, a prep station in there with the sink for, for, um, yeah, like butchering or anything. I don't know if that's part of, you asked, was I gonna have anything in there besides, um...
There'll be no, will there be any cooking where you would need ventilation?
No.
Okay, and, and there'll be no gas running to a, a cooktop or anything like that?
No, no, no.
And there'd be water?
I don't think water's an issue. Jonathan, would that be an issue? They have, they have like a slot sink or something like that?
Uh, I would defer to the building department on that one. Uh, my, my concern is on these drawings, and it just sounds like it's a miscommunication with the architect. On the drawings, the kitchen depicts a refrigerator, a gas, uh, a gas range, and a double sink. So if...
That's got, that's gotta be taken out of the plans, so we can't proceed.
I, I would, I would like a revised set of drawings, just to reflect what the applicant's actually trying to do, which would, uh, satisfy that comment. And then our only other comment was to make some architectural revision to bring the footprint back into a, a conforming size. And then finally, just to make sure that they follow any, uh, code violations, which sounds like they're, which it sounds like they're on top of already.
All right, Jim, do we have to have the Bithias come with new, uh, plans? Uh, you, you could certainly make a condition of approval that they provide revised plans, showing that, uh, the only items in the butler's pantry are what they've described here tonight, and not what's on the architectural plans. Um, I believe one of the concerns was that they bring the building coverage down closer to conformity, and, uh, we need some testimony on that. Okay. So we're okay?
Yes.
Okay. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments? Hearing none?
Now, when you say, sorry, the, the building conformity, what does he mean when he says that?
Uh, the, the, the building coverage, uh, is limited to twenty percent. You're currently proposing twenty-two-point-three percent, which is a rather significant increase, uh, and a rather significant, um, variant. Is there something you can do to reduce that number closer to the twenty percent maximum?
So, uh, the twenty-two, I'm asking for what, two-hundred-and-thirty-two square feet?
Uh, you're asking for twenty-two-point-three percent, and twenty percent is the limit.
But we can get the architect.
You're gonna have to get with the architect and revise the, the plans with the quote kitchen, no refrigerator, no gas cooktop. Uh, the sink is fine, as far as I'm concerned. Um, and also, you have to, he has to reduce the footprint to more conformity down to the twenty, as opposed to where you are at, at twenty-two point, was it eight, Jim? Twenty-two-point-three percent? And this is not the kind of thing that we can do as a conditional approval, Mr. Chairman. We would need those numbers in front of us before we vote. Gotcha. Yeah, you're gonna meet, you're gonna have to meet with your architect and address those two issues, and then we'll, uh, we'll revisit this application at a future date. Next, next month, September. Okay? Okay, so anybody here on the birthday application, it is going to be carried until September, I'm sorry, the date?
Do you want to do the twelfth? Do you guys think you'd be ready, or you wanna do, we have a second one in September, which is twenty-sixth, I believe.
When is possible, because we're trying...
We'll do the twelfth.
We're in a rental, so we don't have the, yeah, we don't have the resources and the funds.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll be one of the first ones on.
Okay, so anybody here on the birthday application, it's gonna be carried to September twelfth with no further notice. If for some reason you're not ready, let us know, and we can carry it again.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Item number ten, twenty-four dash ZB dash twenty-one slash twenty-two V, Muslim Center of Middlesex County. Mr. Arch?
Hello, good evening, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Tim Arch, attorney licensed in the state of New Jersey, here representing Muslim Center of Middlesex County. Um, you will recall that we were, uh, before you not too long ago, I believe we placed all the testimony on the record as to what we were looking for in terms of a, um, freestanding LED digital, uh, signage, uh, for, uh, for the mosque's usage, um, to basically act as a, as a wayfinding sign. Um, there were some outstanding issues. Um, I think, uh, uh, what was brought up in the staff report, the two sort of outstanding issues were hours of operation, and, uh, the type of, of, um, imagery or, or potential video, uh, being shown on that signage in the interim. Since last time we were here, we had the opportunity to, uh, discuss with, uh, the, uh, staff and the, uh, township, uh, the township's administration, and worked out a developers' agreement to address, um, I believe, all of those concerns. Um, sets forth hours of operation, sets forth, uh, the specific, um, uh, occasions during the year where, um, where, uh, short video clips may be able to be played, uh, talks about their duration, talks about, uh, uh, all those sorts of limitations. Um, I don't believe there's any additional testimony that's necessary unless the board would like it. Um, the developers' agreement was already executed. It was provided to the township, and I believe provided to, um, uh, to the board, uh, to, to Mr. Chairman and the, uh, and...
I've got my copy right here. I believe we can, we can move ahead on this right now, to be honest with you. Any other members of the board have any questions or comments about this application? Knowing that all the issues and comments that the, or concerns, I should say, that the, that the county had are, are addressed in this document here, and we can move it forward on this. Um, that being said, do I open it to the public?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, anyone in the public have any questions or comments about this application?
There is no public, so no, Chairman.
Okay. Close the public portion, and I would make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Haydaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
I, Laura, I recuse myself from this application.
Oh, that's right. I apologize.
Thank you.
I didn't write it down, sorry. And Chairman Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the evening.
Good night, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Let's move on to item number eleven, adoption of resolutions from the regular meeting of July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, first is, uh, Tool Cantaria, which you voted to approve. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill? Yes. Next is Nicole Patel, which you voted to approve. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill? Yes. Next is Chris Vacklechuck, which you voted to approve, the amended application. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill? Yes. Uh, last resolution is Annor Academy LLC, which you voted to approve. Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Blount?
Yes.
Mr. Hayduka? Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Chairman Cahill? Yes. Those are all the resolutions I have this evening. Okay, item number fourteen, adoption of the, I'm sorry. Item number fifteen, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, item number sixteen, adjournment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thanks for everything, guys.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Enjoy the rest of your vacation.